Robert Pope.
President.
Bill Holland.
President.
Jason Puckett.
President.
Don Loudon.
President.
Greg Zuzen.
President. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Check register for November 7th and the approval of minutes of October 24th. Are there any questions or comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, including the check register for November 7th and the approval of minutes for the October 24th meeting as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is department updates. Department heads. Chief Stoops, would you like to go first?
Good evening. Thank you. Sean Stoops, Chief of Police. In your packet, you're going to find several things. So we have a few things to go over tonight. The courtroom remodel is nearly complete. I put a couple updated pictures there so you can kind of see the bulkheads in. Electricity's been updated. They've drilled holes in the floor for the new outlets in the training area and done a number of other things. So the carpet and the other flooring should be installed next week. And after that, the painters will come in and do a final coat of paint. And we should be ready to have our grand opening of our training room. So we are anxiously awaiting that. Two of our five new Tahos are almost complete and ready to be issued. And then the other three will be put in to have the all the equipment put in. We finished our final phase of our sergeant promotion process this week. Final calculations of the scores will be completed next week, and we will present the results to our merit board for consideration shortly after that so that we can identify our officer that will be promoted. We're almost complete with the transitioning to our new firearms. I think we have two officers left. That's it. And then everyone will have been transitioned over to the new nine millimeters. Hiring process is now open to fill our six vacancies as of 2025. We still have four right now. So far, we have 125 online registrations. Testing is January 18th. And if anybody's watching and they'd like to apply online, just go to the town's website, to the police tab, and it will direct you on how to do that. It's pretty quick. It takes about 30 seconds. We just finished our 2025 grant application for the JAG grant, and it's already been submitted. So we'll see if we get we get that again. We've had that now for several years. It helps us pay overtime for the officers to do additional time in concentrated areas for proactive policing and aggressive driving. We're working with Angel to help update and improve the town's website. And we are collaborating with the Avon School Corporation Police Department right now to help them develop their field training program so that it mirrors our program because we work so closely together. We felt like it was necessary that they train the same way and have the same field training program so that they know how we're going to respond to runs, and we know how they're going to respond to runs as well. So we are working with Chief Leahy on that. In your packet, you have the the monthly. There's some statistics there and some other information. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions for Chief Stoops?
So I've got one. John actually brought this up before. You got here under cellphone forensics that the generic Android device was not supported by forensic software. That that seems odd to me.
I'm sorry to say that.
The last line there says the generic Android device was not supported by forensic software.
Yeah.
If you'd have told me the iPhone device was not supported, I'd have been a little more understanding, just knowing the difference between the two. Are you guys missing something?
We're not missing anything. It's just it's technology. As you know, being in the technology world, it comes out daily. And there are just some phones that have issues with certain programs, and it's hard to do these forensics and make them collect all that data from every single device that's out there and available. So every now and then we run into that. And he just makes a notation of that in his report. It's not uncommon. And we actually have some iPhones that we don't get into.
Sure.
Or Samsungs. It's just it's really just kind of hit and miss, but it's never 100% where we can break those phones.
Okay.
The FBI has the same issues.
Sure.
Sometimes they can't break a phone and, you know, we'll partner up with them or the state police, and then we'll do it. And we are able to break it and vice versa. So.
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. As you all know, we opened Dan Jones Road Phase Two today. Eight months ahead of schedule. Just saying. Yes. So that was good. We also, to kind of partner with that project, we paved County Road 150 South from the Dan Jones Project to almost Avon Avenue where we ran into good pavement. We also are currently today, I just I probably still smell like asphalt. I said asphalt. paving from Austrian Way, I think it is, or over to Dan or Avon Ave as well. So again, all the roads around the Dan Jones Project are pretty well paved. We have Clark's Creek yet to pave. We have Oriole Point Drive yet to pave. Nicole, Oxford, Foxtail, and one more in Timber Bend, I think Aurelia or something in Timber Bend. So we just have a few more roads to pave. We're hoping to get them done before the gas fault plants close. They're working like crazy. So that's what we're doing. That's what we're concentrating on. Just want everybody to know that to have some patience with the backfilling of the sidewalks and curbs, because that's not our focus. Our focus is to get the construction done. We'll come back and dress things up later. They're using every crew that they have to try and get this stuff done and constructed. And just understand that they're not going to leave without coming back and cleaning up after themselves. It's just we're trying to get the stuff done before we run out of weather. It's pretty much it. Questions?
Congratulations on opening of Dan Jones and your staff. Remarkable job. It looked great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Albrand.
Hello. The October Plan Commission, there were six cases heard. Four of them approved, which was the Hope Landing subdivision, which is the Habitat subdivision. They're having a groundbreaking on 1113 at 4:00 PM, just so you know. The Rivendell Platte was reapproved. The Washington Township Fire Station 145 was approved, and the Silver Springs rezoning was approved or recommended for approval, and I certified that for your next meeting on 1121. Two cases that were continued are the Meyer and the Wind Farms PUD. The November Plan Commission will have those two cases, plus the Wawa Development Review and Platte, a minor Platte revision, the Laurel Heights rezoning that you're going to see introduced later on. And then the Avon Government Center at Eastern Gray is coming through for its DPR. And then we take a sneak peek at December. We have the Family Promise DPR coming through for their seven units on Avon Avenue. And then their second phase to rezone the property just south of it has also come in. And then the Silver Springs preliminary Platte. Those are the cases. We are continuing through the comp plan update. We are through three steering committee meetings, and the next step is our future land use map workshop. So our next step is actually starting to do work and get some some colors on the maps and start talking about future land use. So I'll bring you an update on that hopefully next time.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you. Shelby Pride.
Good evening, Council. Shelby Pride, Parks and Recreation Director. Events wise, we have a pretty big event this Saturday coming up, the Veterans Day Drone Show from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. We will have some activities here in the council chambers, and then everyone will gather outside at 6:00 PM for a 200 drone show honoring our veterans. So please come out and join us. Our Christmas tree lighting is Saturday, December 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We also have some new activities for that this year. You can sign up for carriage rides around the lake. They are a requirement to sign up and pay $10 for a spot. One of my event staff went to the state conference, Indiana Park and Rec Association State Conference was the last three days in French Lick. He came back today, came right to my office and reported. He's got new ideas, new ways to do things, some good resources, and was really excited and just seemed kind of refreshed on on some things. So I'm really excited we were able to send him to go to that. Thank you guys for approving that and the budget to to be able to go to trainings and things like that. On the maintenance side, our maintenance superintendent of, well, he wasn't the superintendent for the superintendent for 11 years, but he served over 11 years just on the park side. He actually did some years in a different department here in the town prior to that. But he retired last Friday was his last day, or Thursday, I'm so sorry, Halloween, was his last day. So thank you to those who joined us in celebrating him and sending him off to enjoy the rest of his life, not working for the town of Avon. I am happy to say yesterday I promoted our grounds foreman to fill that vacancy, and he accepted. So we filled that vacancy and continue to move forward. And then our next PRBC Park and Recreation Beautification Committee meeting is December 4th here in the council chambers at 6:30.
Any questions for Shelby?
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, do you have anything from the clerk treasurer office? Okay. Speechless. That's a first. Next item on the agenda is public comment. The public make comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. One day Ash, correct? I live at 6547 East County Road 100 South at Avon. Even though I'm here about the poll take. Plans, they were approved last week. Even though they say they're not taking our property, the town plans show our property is still in the mix. Now, I want to know if they're planning on stealing our land, cutting our trees, which are 100-plus years old, messing up our front yards, and then tearing down our fence and flooding our front yard, and then contaminating our pond. And I also want to add that they they need to find a different entrance for this this property. It is such a bad place to have an entrance. They've got 40-some houses with children coming in there. They've got 40 houses of children standing on that road, even though they have a bus shelter. Do they think that all those children are going to stand in that shelter? I think not. This is a bad place for our for an entrance. It's just they they need to have bigger cul-de-sacs to where the buses can go in. It's they need to find a different entrance. It's it's just a bad place for an entrance. Somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to get killed. A child is going to get hit. It's it's just a bad place. They need to go back to the drawing board and find a different entrance. And I surely hope that you will keep that in mind and not pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward at this time? With nobody else coming forward, then we'll move on to the agenda and go to council comment and liaison reports. Mr. Holland? I have nothing at this time. Ms. Loudon?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Puckett?
Nothing here.
Mr. Pope?
Ditto.
Oh, my gosh. Am I doing all the heavy lifting or what here? As Linda said, we had a plant commission meeting on the 28th, and we did continue the Meyer and Wind Farm. Meyer really to consider relocating the fueling station off of 200 to 900. And then on the Wind Farm, I think probably gets a better clarification of a clarification, as well as then identifying unpermitted uses on that site. So those are coming back. We did have the comp plan steering committee meeting on the 29th that I attended. I also attended the Hendricks County Economic Development Partnership Quarterly Luncheon on the 30th. And then, as we all were here today, the ribbon cutting for Dan Jones and 150 South. So. Next item then is new business, introduction of rezone for Laurel Heights. Linda, are you going to do that, or is Ryan going to do that? Okay, then if the petitioner would come forward. For this. All right. Thank you, sir. Did we have that PowerPoint up? Well, there it is. All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is John Moore. My address is 50 South Meridian Street, Suite 700, Indianapolis, 46204. Here tonight on behalf of your petitioner, Lenar Holmes, for this introduction. With me tonight, I have Tony Begato in the crowd with Lenar Holmes, as well as the property owner, Mr. Bloom is here as well. This is a property at 4252 and 4296 East Main Street in Avon. And if I can get this to work. There we go. Shelby, can you give him a hand? Sorry.
No, you're fine. I think it went to sleep. Maybe it needs new batteries.
Got it? Thank you. Just this one, right?
Yeah. Okay, the pointer works, but not the arrow.
We're gonna have to go old school just. Sorry. I told you you were getting the third team. Yeah, this wouldn't have happened if Linda had done it. But so this site, it's approximately 29 acres, and it is located currently outside Avon Town Limits on the far western edge of Avon. There we go. So here on the site, you've got obviously the corporate limits for the town of Avon. This site is just to the west. The Danville Town Limits are here along the western property line as well as the northern property line. And as some of you might be aware, this was originally slated to be annexed into the town of Danville, given the contiguity there. But based on some comments from us, Town of Avon, a meeting with Ryan, we understood it was a desire for this to be annexed into the town of Avon. So that process is in place, and it'll be a two-part annexation, just given the limited contiguity we have right here. But with working through some engineers and with Ryan, we've been able to determine we can annex it into Avon. It's just going to be a two-step process rather than coming in as one petition. But as part of that, we are requesting to rezone this site to R3 to permit single-family residential homes. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial of the site. Directly to the west is the Four Oaks subdivision PUD. That PUD is in the town of Danville and developed by Lenar's predecessor, wasn't it? So it's going to be similar homes to Four Oaks here. It's sort of an extension of Four Oaks. Although since we're coming into Danville or coming into Avon, you'll see here we are not going to connect to Four Oaks. We had some meetings with with Ryan about that. And so there will not be any connection between these two subdivisions. Next slide, please. Avon Comprehensive Plan from 2017. I know we're undergoing a revamp of the Avon Plan, but obviously, given where this site is, there's really no recommendation for it in the current comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Here's the preliminary concept plan. As I indicated, the total acreage of this property is approximately 29 acres. It's two parcels, and there are two existing residences on on this property. One to the north there, you can see at the northwest corner, and then one here to the, what's the word, to the west of the entrance there is another residence. So all of the 29 acres is coming in as part of the annexation. We're requesting that all of it be zoned to R3 as part of that annexation. But the Laurel Heights subdivision that Lenar will be developing is roughly 17.2 acres of that 29 acres. So if we look at it from a density perspective, Laurel Heights is proposing a maximum of 40 homes, or Lenar is proposing that a maximum of 40 homes on the site would give you an overall density of approximately 1.45 homes an acre. With the Laurel Heights within the 17.2 acres, you're looking at a density of approximately 2.3 homes per acre. If we can flip to the next slide. This will be Lenar's Cornerstone Collection. You're looking at a price point here in the high fours to mid fives, 500s, thousands for the for the homes. Square footages of 1,800 to 3,400 square feet. We'll offer ranch and two stories homes here. Lots will have a minimum 70-foot wide widths. There'll be no apartments or townhomes. There'll be two and three-car garages, and we'll offer a variety of options with the homes. And obviously, we have to meet Avon's architectural standards, and so we'll have these options available so we can meet Avon's point system within its architectural standards and the zoning ordinance. Then if we want to go to the next slide, we've got various renderings of some of the typical homes you would expect to see in the Cornerstone Collection. This is the Ashbury section of the Cornerstone Collection. You see the various architectural features that are there designed to meet the architectural standards in Avon zoning ordinance. Next slide. It's Fairmont Collection in the Cornerstone Collection, two-story homes, two-car garages there. Next slide. Again, this is the Fairmont part of the Cornerstone Collection. Another just differing architectural renderings and styles. Next slide. There's another. That's the Oxford part of the Cornerstone Collection. Next slide. And then that's the Rockwell. Again, just a variety of different home styles, different options, all intended to meet Avon's architectural standards in their zoning ordinance. Next slide. Similar, just different variations, front porches, different roof lines, things like that. And the next slide. Next slide, please. And then there's the Ranch Seabrook Collection within the Cornerstone Collection. But so you have a variety of options, variety of home styles. All of those will meet the architectural standards in the Avon ordinance, the anti-monotony standards, things like that. So this is the introduction of this rezoning petition. We are set to go to the Plan Commission later this month to introduce this. And as I said, the annexations are running concurrently with the rezoning application. And we're happy to hear your comments and answer any questions. Any questions for the petitioner?
No, I would just like to say thank you for bringing us back to Avon. We appreciate that. That's all.
We like Avon. It wasn't. It was originally, you can just see the contiguity to it. It was just made sense of coming as a one-fell swoop, but we're happy to come to the town of Avon and enjoy working with Avon. So.
I do have a question, but it's it's not entirely relevant to that. And I'll save it for just a minute. I just want to make some comments. One, I do like the, again, the word that I've used is texture a lot. I like the variation in the texture. Because of the layout of this, there's really no backside of the houses that are really going to be viewed from any kind of major road plan. So my concerns in the past have been, all right, let's make sure we've got the sides in the back of the house when they can be viewed easily. I don't see that being a problem here. And I want to reiterate what Dawn said about bringing the project to Avon. My question, and again, it's not really relevant, but you've got a home that has a long road. Where's that going to connect to? How are they going to get back out to 1036?
So that right now, what is planned. Or it jots down there. If we can pull up that that conceptual site plan again. Get to it. So currently, we'll move back. There we go. So originally, this development subdivision was going to stub into that cul-de-sac there where you see the notch on the western side of the development.
I assume then that's where you're gonna cut over?
Yes, although in talking with Mr. Bloom and his representative, Mr. Webb, just earlier tonight, we might shift some of those lots to the south and then connect it further up closer to the home so it's less maintenance for the homeowner. And then they will get into our road system and then exit in and out of our entrance.
Okay, fair enough. That was all I had.
Any other questions, Mr. Holland, Mr. Puckett?
My only comments are, again, as well, thank you for reconsidering. And when we talk about the anti-monotony, we're talking all four sides. And then also, as the homes are laid out, two stories, ranch, you know, little change, so it doesn't look all the same. But that's it, that's all I have.
I guess I do have one more question. So I know it's different jurisdiction between Washington Township and, or Avon and Danville at this point. So why, if they were going to connect in on that stub, are they not wanting to connect in on that stub now? Because typically, we do require more than one egress.
That was more a request from the Town of Avon. You're gonna have different maintenance of different roads. And so for snow plows and who's crossing and plowing what roads, that was in our initial discussions to, was asked for us to look at that. And so we were able to do that. It really wasn't our decision, which. Yes.
Yes, they were originally gonna connect to the road in Danville. It's not a full stub connection, so there's, it looks like cul-de-sac. So, you know, going into that neighborhood was already gonna be problematic. And then it is the jurisdiction of Danville. When it came to us, they also had a variance for the other property, for the northern property owner, to not have street frontage. And we thought because they were two different jurisdictions, they don't need more than one entrance off of Main Street. And that could get this additional property true public street frontage. But this was a fairly good solution to that problem. And also helping to get them into Avon was, you know, separate, making separation.
Sure, I was just curious, just asking why we weren't stubbing.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will point out, Ryan and Linda have been very helpful in helping us get this done and come up with some of those things. So it's been good.
Thank you. And for the minutes, we'll show that we have introduced the introduction of rezone for Laurel Heights. Moving on then, we'll go to a request for waterline easement for East and Gray. Mr. Cannon.
Yes, you may recall, actually, it may have been about a month, maybe a month and a half ago, we had a request for East and Gray to be provided in easement through what we kind of refer to as a summer lot park property. And it was basically gonna run east from County Road 625 all the way to East and Gray on the north side of US 36. And we granted the easement. We actually never recorded it. But they also needed an easement from Raider and Raider. And so when they went and approached the Raiders about that easement, they found out that the Raiders' septic system is actually in the front yard. And you can't put a waterline underneath a septic system first. Pretty good health reasons. So they basically had to find another path for the waterline. So it actually just, they had designed this not actually knowing that the town had bought the sports fields on the south side. So they're basically gonna move the waterline. It's still gonna connect from 625, but it's gonna come along the south side of 36. And then they're actually gonna have to go under 36, back to the north side, and then connect over. But the town still ends up being the property owner for the property. So they are just asking, the easement was never recorded on the north, so that's not for certain. And so now they're basically asking a portion of the easement on the north and a portion of the easement on the south. We did share the impacts with our sports department, and Shelby and the Parks Department looked at it. There would be some damage to the outfield. They have said that they would backfill them with sand and then put in good topsoil, reseed them. Some of our outfield fences may have to come down. We've asked them to replace those fences, which some of them are in poor shape. So that works in our favor a little bit. There's a couple other things we'll have to be careful about. There's a, there's a flagpole. And then three of our actual lights that are like 35 feet tall are on the path. So we've passed that on to them and said they're gonna have to navigate and figure out how they go about that, either if they brace them and backfill and make sure they don't fall over or that they go along a path to avoid doing that damage. So that's their request here. There is an exhibit in your packets that shows the alignment of the waterline, but they are requesting this easement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
As we talked, Ryan, there is, I'll call it an easement or right-of-way between 36 and the softball fields. And if they could use that to move their equipment back and forth versus moving it back and forth on our softball fields. I know they have to come a few feet on the inside of the fence, but that gives them a lot more flexibility, I think, to move that heavy equipment that could do some damage or more damage to our fields.
Yeah, we're certainly asking to do that. Originally, they had hoped to go on the other side of the fence, but there's actually a West Central Conservancy District interceptor that runs from the south side of 36 to the north side. And so they have to have a certain distance of separation from that. So, but you're absolutely right. We can request as much, that they limit as much impact to our fields. And if they have to remove some of the trees and some of the others brush along the end dot right-of-way, at least for their equipment moving and doing all of that, that, I mean, they'll have to get in boring equipment and stuff like that to do the crossing on 36. So we'd certainly appreciate them to limit the damage to our sports fields. And so we'll work with them on that.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
So they are going to bore under 36. They're not going to use part of our trail system that goes under 36 for their, okay, good.
No, yeah, they're gonna have to bore. End dot will actually require them to put in a casing. And then they'll slide the waterline through that casing. And so the only way to put that casing through is to bore.
Shelby, is this gonna impact any plans that we currently have for the use of those fields?
No, I mean, obviously, we would love for them to do this over not baseball season, but I don't think we can control that. But again, asking them to limit or make as little impact as possible is gonna be really our only hope. We would love for them to be able to do this when it's not season. But like right now, we have lacrosse on there, so now's not a good time either. But other than that, I mean, there's really nothing that we can do.
This might be a good question for you. Ryan says that the fences aren't in great shape. Is there a plan in the future for us to be replacing all of them? And if there is, how far out in the future is that?
We are actually getting quotes right now. I've told my team, no more capital improvements for right now. We've done a lot this year to improve the grounds and everything over there for the facilities. So I've, in the quotes, I have requested them to give me one big quote to refence everything and then maybe break it down by field so that if we do need to take chunks, we can be prepared to bring you guys some options of how to do that and fund it.
Would it make sense to ask for a, by foot or some, similar to how we do roadways? Cost per foot for fence, instead of having them just replace one section and we're gonna be replacing it? Yes, there you go. Would that be more sensible in this, rather than just them having them fix just that section?
Ryan and I have kind of talked about that. We just don't know how much of that fence they're going to have to take out, if it's even worth, you know, going down that road. But certainly, it's been in our minds that whatever we need to ask for, we can in the best way possible.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan or Shelby or staff?
So they are not going to compensate for the easement that they're taking of our field?
We didn't ask for compensation. So if you recall, we're actually reimbursing them through TIF dollars. So we're really taking out of one pocket, putting it in another to actually ask them to pay us. So we didn't ask for any compensation, which is why we just said, will you help us in resolve whatever damage you're doing as a response to it? If we can ask for compensation if we want, I, we did not, just because I didn't feel like that made sense.
Do we need a motion then to approve this, Ryan?
Yes, please.
Somebody prepared to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the request for waterline easement for East and Gray as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Craig Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the Garmong contract for Avon Civic Center. Mr. Cannon, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, Dan and I will do this together. I think you guys are well aware of this. We've been working on this forever. So a couple weeks ago, or I think two council meetings ago, you saw the agreement between the town and the school. And at that time, we told you the next step then would get, would be to get our CMC, which is Garmong, under contract. And so that's the step that's on your agenda tonight. This is the contract for them to be the CMC. This has been through numerous iterations. It was a difficult process because it included Garmong, the town's attorney, and the school's attorney. And so it went back and forth ad nauseam. And I would say Dan and Anna and everybody did a fantastic job on this because it was a little bit challenging to balance everybody's desires in this. The school's attorney had certain concerns, and Dan had certain concerns. And then we kind of had to navigate all of those. And certainly, then we had to satisfy Garmong as well. So I appreciate Dan's effort on this. Again, it was a lot. It's pretty technical. It's mostly just legal. So I'm not necessarily gonna bore you with it. I'm not gonna ask Dan to bore you with it. But it has been thoroughly vetted. And we're excited to hopefully get this approved. If you guys approve this tonight, the next step then is for them to give us the GMP, which is the gross maximum price. And we're shooting to have that for you guys at your December 5th meeting. And that's really the big deal, when you guys approve the actual cost of the building, whereas this is, this is really just the legal terms of our relationship with Garmong. So Dan and I are happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon or Mr. Taylor?
I don't have a question, but I'm going to ask for the fourth time for the council to be presented with the exterior brick on the building.
Got it in the, back there.
Okay.
We talked about it, and you certainly answered my questions. And when I asked about the red line version, and they said the whole document was a red line version. So, and I appreciate the school working with us as well, so.
Let's see here then. Do we need a motion then to enter into this agreement? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to enter into the Garmong contract as presented?
I will make a motion that we adopt the Garmong contract for Avon Civic Center as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Craig Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the Impact Review and Branding Update Proposal. Shelby, are you doing that, or?
I'm gonna go ahead and do it, but Shelby can pitch in and give me a hand. We talked about this at our last work session and some of the challenges we were having with our branding. Not only just our town branding, but we've talked about trying to bring our town branding closer to our school corporation, whether that be through colors or fonts or whatever it may be. But we've also, as we've added sports and as we're about to add additional parks, we want to build a family of brands and make sure that all of our organizations are falling under that family of brands and that all that family of brands works together and matches together. So we went back to RLR, who did our original branding for the town, and asked them to give us a scope and a fee to kind of review that and have a conversation with us. One of the things that's really sensitive about branding is everybody has their own opinion about it. And so it is really a consensus-building process. So RLR has said they will go kind of through that process with us, work with the council, work with our sports teams, work with our park staff, and of course, all of us, and look at some of the impacts of changing the branding and then create some concepts and then kind of create that family of branding. And so that's what their proposal is for. Shelby and I are happy to answer any questions. The fee is $9,500. Again, that's kind of broken down. The impact review is $2,000. Concept presentations, $4,000. The artwork package, it's $1,500. And then the identity style guide is to make sure when we print shirts or when we do mugs or when we do anything, that that brand is carried over and that has the right artwork, the right colors, all of those things that when we're being represented, we're being represented sufficiently by that style guide. So again, Shelby and I are happy to answer any questions you guys have.
What do we have in the budget for this?
We did not budget for this, which is why we're bringing it to you guys tonight. So we'll have to find somewhere in the budget. Hopefully Shelby will pay for at least a portion of it. Do you want to pay for all of it? I was gonna offer to pay for some of it from Edit if we needed to, but.
I had budgeted a line item this year for signage, for new signage. If, oh yeah, he forgot conveniently. In case we did bring these new parks online and we were ready to roll with signage, I did budget that in our 2024 budget. I have not spent that money, so there's more than enough in there to cover this if it needs to come completely out of Parks and Rec, food and beverage, sorry.
Any other questions?
When you talk about impact review, what does that encompass?
Everything, the cost. If you change your logo, we have Town of Avon, Welcome Avon signs. We have trucks, we have shirts. If you change your logo, there's a cost to that. So that's, it's reviewing the impact of us changing our branding for you guys to have a consideration of, do you want to spend that amount of money as a result of changing our branding? And that becomes part of the discussion and consideration. It's not just the artwork or what it looks like, but it's also the cost of doing that as well. So that's the impact review.
That's what I was hoping at that.
Yep, yeah.
And another reason that I think we'll kind of tag into that is with the new Civic Center and the amount of signage and logos and graphics and colors that will be there. Now's the time to do that and be prepared to put a big sign up that maybe not be this logo or not these colors of the Town of Avon, so.
The question I have here is your reimbursable expenses. To me, those are soft costs. I'm assuming they could tap into that out of the $9,500 that they're charging us. You know, they're gonna charge us for express mail, postal service, license, reproduction, copies, mileage. It's little things, but little things add up. So if we can strike that from this agreement, I'm all for it.
Yeah, we'd have to discuss that with them, but I don't expect that we'd have a lot of reimbursement of little expenses, but we can have that conversation with them.
So they should feel comfortable in striking it if we're not gonna have a lot of them?
Probably, probably not.
Well, we're getting a deal. It's $500 less than a park bed.
Take your pick.
Any other questions for Shelby or Ryan? Would somebody like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion. Go, do you have a question?
I, I think I have a question for you, Greg. You asked for something to be changed on this agreement. Do we need to delay this motion, this agenda item, until we at least have an opportunity to negotiate that with them?
Can you make it subject to that change being removed?
That's probably what I would request, that you do just, this has a three- to four-month timeframe. So as we start to get into the construction of the Civic Center and as we get into the spring, we'd like to get this process started. So if you would give us the ability to let staff negotiate that with them if you're so inclined, that would be our request.
That was it? Go for it. All right, I'll make sure I word this correctly. I will make a motion that we approve the Impact Review and Branding Update Proposal with the, I guess, with the idea that.
I guess with the idea that we, the staff can work on these soft costs that Greg mentioned. Did I get anywhere close to that?
Not to exceed $9,500.
Maybe total cost not to exceed 9,500 including reimburseals. Does that capture?
Total cost not to exceed 9,500, including reimburseables.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-23 declaring surplus property. Deputy Chief Margeson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Margeson, Deputy Chief with the Police Department. We are in front of you tonight to request surplus property declaration of a 2010 Dodge Charger. The age is obviously pretty old, well, probably one of the oldest vehicles in our current fleet. And the mechanic's telling us it's probably going to need $3,000 to $4,000 in repairs. My guess is that would probably be close to the top end we will get when we take this to auction anyway. So we're hoping that we can take it with the vehicle that you declared a surplus a few meetings ago and sell them both at the same time.
Any questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-23 declaring the police vehicles a surplus property.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next item on the agenda is the final reading of Ordinance 2021-45 prohibiting reckless driving exhibitions. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, this is final reading. This ordinance establishes reckless driving exhibitions as public nuisances, creates a fine structure of $2,500 for the first fine and $7,500 for any subsequent fines. And also provides for the towing of vehicles that either are used or participate in the exhibitions. This, or the purpose of this ordinance is to eliminate the dangers caused by these exhibitions as many other communities have experienced. And this is our, our chance to try to discourage that behavior here in Avon.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Police Department has had their input in this resolution.
Yes, we appreciate their help.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2024-45 prohibiting reckless driving exhibitions as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dawn. Roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Next item is the final reading of Ordinance 2024-46 Bond Ordinance Phase 1A Riverwalk. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, this is the developer bond for the Eastern Gray project. The bond ordinance establishes the basic parameters of your authority to grant the, to issue these bonds. These will be economic development revenue bonds. They will be issued by the Economic Development Commission. The Economic Development Commission made all their final approvals last night under Anna's tutelage and guidance. And these, this money will be used to finance the infrastructure related to this, as you know, very, rather significant development. The ordinance provides that the bonds will be paid from TIF revenues and taxpayer payments. The total bond, this is a two-part bond 2A and 2B is delineated in the ordinance itself. But together, the money does flow toward that infrastructure construction. There is an optional redemption period built in which would allow the town to redeem these bonds at some date in the future, if that was within our best interest. We think that's always important. The ordinance also provides for an out, a high or maximum interest charge of 6% on the Series A and up to 10% on the Series B. We would expect that the, the actual interest would be lower. But the, and then finally, the ordinance after several pages does authorize that all the documents necessary for the bond be authorized so that your president and clerk treasurer may sign all the documents relating to the issuance. This is final reading. And it is also the final approval needed for the bonds.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? You know, me as a banker, that when you say exceed 6% or 10%, I know that's the maximum, but sometimes the maximum becomes the minimum. And I just don't want to get caught in that negotiation. And then my other question is on the minimum denominations of 100,000, that seems high.
Yes, usually the minimum's 5,000. So usually when you see a higher amount, it tells you that we already know the buyer.
Okay.
And so whether it be a bank or developer, we already know that. And so that changes from 5,000 to a much larger amount. And that's what's going on here.
Okay. Those are my only questions. Anybody else have any questions? Somebody like to make a motion regarding the ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we approve 2024-46, the bond ordinance authorizing the bonds for the Riverwalk 1A district as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Ordinance 2024-47, 2025 Salary Ordinance. Mr. Cannon?
Yes, we've talked about this during the budget process and before the end of the year, you guys are required to pass a salary ordinance that establishes the maximum pay for all of our employees. So the numbers that are reflected here are not necessarily the salaries of employees. It's the maximum that they can be paid. These numbers actually match what you just approved in the budget. A couple of changes, as just a reminder that we did through the budget process, we adjusted our longevity pay from $100 a year to $150 a year. So that's in section seven of the ordinance. So it says after five years, you would get $750. And we also extended that from a max of 25 years to a max of 30 years. So that's the max anyone can get is $4,500 for their longevity pay. The second thing that we did in the budget process was also adjusting our HSA contributions. And so you'll see that on page two of Exhibit, Exhibit A, where it shows employee health savings account contribution. This, a single person would get $1,250 and the family would get 2,500. Currently, that's 750 and $1,500. And so all of that information is represented here in the salary ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions. I would, if there's any concerns in particular about the HSA contributions, I'd ask for you guys to share that with me tonight. We are in the middle of open enrollment for our employees. So our employees are, are signing up for which plans they want. So this can become a consideration in their decisions for their families. So again, I know you, I'm not asking you to approve it tonight, but if you have concerns about that HSA one, I'd appreciate if you just give me a heads up and that way we can at least communicate to employees as they're making decisions. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Holland? Did we not discuss this before?
We did, yes.
And I think some people had concerns?
Well, I'm not sure. Some people said they may, they, in the budget process, they said they may want to revisit things during the salary ordinance. So I don't know if that was the concern, but if it was, I wanted to know that sooner than later. But yes, we did talk about it during the budget process.
I know too that maybe for the, the police department, it's another added benefit that we can use to promote our department and to get people to consider. And, and to me that, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a lot, but it's to some people, that is a lot of money. So I'm fine with it.
What does that come out to? Just so we have an idea. How much of an increase is that for the year? Based breakdown by single and family that we have now?
So right, it's a, it's a $500 increase for a single.
But how many singles do we have? What is, what's our budget number?
What's the budgeted amount? Do you want to know the whole overall amount is, the impact to the budget?
Yes.
All right, you have any minute on the question.
So this is not the final reading? Correct. It's just the introduction.
Dawn, can I ask you for clarification? Are you asking for the delta just for the HSA upgrade?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Ryan's looking at it. Are there any other questions? I'm sure I'll have some, but I'll, I'll come in and talk to Ryan about it. Yeah, if you have some, yeah, feel free to talk to Ryan or staff.
So I budgeted at 18 single. Can I cut you in a form? 18 single and 40, 40 families. So it's 40,000. And 9,000, 49,000 is the delta. Put your cup in there, Ryan.
Thank you.
If we did that contribution, we'd budget. We did out of Edit. That's where we were paying our HSA contributions from before.
Any other questions? And let's show that we have introduced Ordinance 2024-48 Employee Handbook Amendments. Moving on then to, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. The introduction of Ordinance 2024-47, 2025 Salary Ordinance. And let's move on to the introduction of Ordinance 2024-48 Employee Handbook Amendments.
Yes, this ordinance, if adopted, would make three primary changes to your employee handbook. First, it would add a robust employee privacy protection section, which would address the manner in which we control and protect employee information and provide for procedures to maintain that. Secondly, it would create more flexibility in the awarding of PTO for lateral hires or hiring employees with experience elsewhere. And would give the town manager and the police chief latitude in awarding additional PTO that would mirror the level of experience. And then thirdly, it would create a new leave benefit supplemental workplace injury and disease. And this would be designed to prevent employees who are injured during the scope of their employment or who become ill because of working in their employment from losing compensation while they are on other leave, workers' compensation or other leave, disability leave. The this new benefit has several features. I'd invite the council to look into that and let us know if there are changes in those details you'd like to have. This is introduction only.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Cannon? I know we talked about this in the work session earlier. My, my take is the first two items, I don't think there's any real issues. It was just the third item. And there was discussion if we wanted to create an employee work committee, if anybody wanted to be on any of those discussion committees, feel free to raise your hand and give us Ryan. Otherwise, if you have any comments, I, I would say this will not come back to final reading until we have all the issues clarified and worked out. With that, then we will show that we have introduced Ordinance 2024-48 Employee Handbook Amendments for the minutes. Moving on then, we have the introduction of Ordinance 2024-49, creating a 2024 Food and Beverage Fund. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, at previous meetings, you approved the issuance of the Food and Beverage Bond Fund, which will benefit your parks and will allow Shelby to get some of that money back that Ryan just made her commit. No, I'm teasing. So when, in order to provide a clear accounting of these bond funds, this ordinance would create a fund very simply for those proceeds. And so this would create the Food, the 2024 Food and Beverage Bond Fund. And it would allow you to know exactly where that money is spent. This becomes particularly important when we have audits, but also it is required by the terms of the bond. This is introduction only. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Basically, we're just opening its own checking account.
That's exactly right. The bond proceeds will be put in there and then the expenditures will all be paid directly out of that fund.
Then let us show for the minutes, the introduction of Ordinance 2024-49, creating a 2024 Food and Beverage Bond Fund being introduced. Moving on to the introduction of Ordinance 2024-50, creating a 2024 General Obligation Bond Fund.
Right, this is the same thing for the General Obligation Bond Fund, which is designed to assist in the, in your streets. And this two, it's a $2 million bond or so. And so this is the same thing. It creates a fund for the deposit of those bond funds. And, and then all bills will be paid out of that, creating a transparent place for you to track how that money is being spent. It is like the previous fund. It's a non-reverting fund, stands on its own. This will cross into another year. This fund will just stay right where it is. It won't be part of the general funds. Again, this is introduction only.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Let us show then for the minutes, the introduction of Ordinance 2024-50, creating 2024 General Obligation Bond Fund being introduced. Mr. Taylor, legal counsel report. This is the second of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward, state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Was nobody coming forward then? We'll close that portion of the agenda and move to council comment. Any comments, council? We'll go to council calendar. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, a couple of things. I know Shelby shared it earlier, but don't forget November 9th, 5 to 6 p.m. that you're going to show your town hall. We love you to show up and wear that fantastic robe show. Also, on November 20th, we're doing the Give It Back Food Truck, the Mary Lee Mayer Food Pantry. So town staff will be working that day and we'll use our town trucks to load up donations. That's obviously right before Thanksgiving. So it's our opportunity to kind of help stock the shelves for Thanksgiving. It was a great success and the town staff had a great time doing it last year. Really looking forward to that again. We're hoping to go even bigger this year than we did last year. So if anyone's watching, please bring your food here or council members or anybody you'd like to deliver. We'll, we'll take it over to the pantry and help them stock all their shelves and stuff. So you can just drop off here. We make it super easy. People can just drive up into our football here and drop off. Staff will help them unload their vehicles and everything. So we make it as simple as possible. Thanks, Julie. Sorry.
What day was that food pantry?
November 20th. Sorry, my microphone was off. Julie saved me. Our next council meeting is November 21st at 7:00 p.m. It's, we do not have a work session. I did want to ask you guys. I know we're coming towards the end of the year here. We do have a couple pending litigation situations that we need to do an executive session for. So I was going to see if potentially we could do that instead of a work session on December 5th. If we could actually start at 5:00 p.m. and do a joint executive session with the RDC from 5:00 to 6:00 on our mediation that we need to do. We need guidance from the RDC and the council. And then from 6:00 to 7:00 on some of our other pending litigation. I'm light on a work session item. So unless you guys are aware of other stuff, I think that time would be better to use in executive session. So I don't know if that would work for you guys or not, or what your feelings are. So I don't know if that would work for you guys or not, or what your feelings are, or if we want to, we could also schedule a special day to do the executive session if we want to keep the work session.
You, you said that was our 5 December meeting?
Yep, yeah.
I'd say that's fine.
Yeah.
Just schedule it. One thing I just thought of is we should probably start advertising for boards and commissions.
Yes, actually, that's, that's on my to-do list with Angel, so yeah, if you guys can start doing that, Angel and I will start putting together the, the outreach to the community to get them, but start encouraging people to apply. We'll start looking at what our vacancies look like for next year. We know we'll have some, some to fill, so get out there and pound the pavement and find us some good people, please.
And then my last comment is, will next meeting have our, probably not the final reading for our annexations, but that final reading and then it's the 90-day window?
Actually, so yeah, on your November 21st meeting, please have a quorum. I know it's getting close to Thanksgiving. I already know of one council member who can't attend, but your final adoption for your, for the Carnoustie and the East of County Road 400 East annexations are on that agenda. You also have two introductions for public hearings for annexations that are already in the paper, so that is an important meeting on November 21st, so if, for some reason, if you can't make it, please let me know, or please try to delay travel until after the 21st if you can.
Can we get our proxy?
You cannot. And that process is, we advertise forever for that, so we, I'd hate to lose that schedule at this point, so. So I've got, thank you.
Thank you for attending. Meeting adjourned.